This meeting of the Gaston City Council will not come to order and the Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Ellison for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed. We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business, I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation, please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us praise the heaven and father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the opportunity to serve you in any capacity, we ask that you would be with us as we go through this process today, give us civility and let us move on with the city's business so that our citizens here will be, will be understanding of the process that we go through with making those decisions which are good and pleasing to you also, we ask you to be with those persons who were affected by yesterday's storms, be with them and strengthen them and give them the wherewithal to go through this process and move on to a brighter day. Bless, that you continue to bless us and lead us and guide us and we'll continue to give you all the praise and glory in the blessed rest in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting, work session, and City Council meeting held over March the 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of March the 1st through the 7th, then the 8th through the 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
No.
Unfinished business, we have none today. Number 9 and 10, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct public hearings allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition that has already been performed, we have two locations, I'm going to read the addresses and names and anyone who wishes to speak about either of these may come forward. 909 Avenue G in District 3 for $2,759. 915 Avenue G in District 3 for $2,759. Both properties are owned by the State of Alabama and heirs of Jewel Wilson, Doris Jean Wilson, Diane Wilson Haslett.
Haslett.
Joel Davis Wilson and Arthur Lee Wilson Jr. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor of them? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt both resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both.
11 is a resolution awarding bid number 3234, this is for the, a used 2008 or newer trimmer mower with three rotary decks. The NEAPA coordinator has recommended awarding the bid to Jerry Paye Turf and Irrigation and the amount is $13,853.40. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
12 is a resolution amending resolution number R-177-12 to correct an error. This relates to a lease between the city and Edgewell County Tourism Board for the annexed building at the Morton, Morton Glosser Amphitheater. The square footage was stated as 500 square feet, but the correct measurement is 1725 square feet. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
13 is an ordinance amending city code section 118, 129 to designate Berea Avenue from College Street to South 8th Street and Cherry Street, from South 4th Street to South 5th Street as no parking zones. Who's going to make the motion?
I don't make a, I would like to make a motion that we amend the Berea and just have the south side of Berea as no parking.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to amend the ordinance limiting the no parking to the south side of Berea, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the amendment.
Do you want to go ahead and pass it now or what?
It's the first reading, I'll wait until next week. No worries.
You want to go ahead and do it?
Well, I mean, we, there's no objection, we just amended it, but I mean, he can wait till next week if he don't want to.
Well, I can ask for unanimous consent to consider this this morning, then we can do it.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll ask for passage, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is with the amendment.
Yeah, with the amendment.
That's true, it's going to get Cherry Street from 4th to 5th Street on both sides and Berea on the south side from Church Street to South 8th Street.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance as amended, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Business, is there any?
Yes, Mr. President, I have, I have a resolution that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today, it's a resolution authorizing a license agreement with ABC 3340 for tower equipment and space for a weather camera.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, this is, this is an agreement with Channel 3340, ABC, for tower equipment that's going to be placed on the City Hall building here that will give us a panoramic view of the river and downtown, and we will get a lot of free advertising and publicity out of this camera, it doesn't cost us a dime.
Any other discussion?
Panoramic is that a view from up high?
Yes, sir, it's a broad, it's a broad view.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have three items, the first of which I'd like to ask for consideration today, it's a resolution authorizing emergency solutions grant application through, through a DECA.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is a $200,000 grant application and certification through a DECA, as I mentioned before, for, again, for $200,000, this is formerly the McKinley Grants, and these monies are targeted for emergency shelter activities and homeless shelter activities for 13th Place, the Love Center, and the Salvation Army.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have another item here that I'd like for us to ask for consideration today, it's an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2013 budget, authorizing TIF funds for acquisition of a building, I'd like to ask again that we consider that today.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, again, this is an ordinance where we'll be authorizing the use of $55,000 in TIF funds to purchase a building at address 741, building and property actually, on 741 Forest Avenue.
Second.
Second.
That's where the old Sears building. Yeah, we're alone in the back, and where we already own where, where Jaxx was, and we also own the parking lot next to Jaxx.
Right.
So all we need now is the bank.
All we need now is the bank.
You have a whole block.
Have a whole block.
Okay.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Final item I'd like to ask for consideration today, Mr. President, is a resolution awarding bid number 3220 for the Gaston City Hall water cool rotary screw chiller project.
Second.
And that's not for the drinking water coolers now.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is a $93,000 bid, bid, it's, it's actually for a chiller, that, our, this building is on the chiller, on the chiller system, so the, the heating and cooling of the, as I understand it, is controlled by the rotary screw chiller.
And I do understand that when we build our new City Hall downtown that we can carry this chiller with us.
I wish you luck.
I would tell y'all if we build it within the next five years, we can, because it's got a five-year warranty on the complete unit with parts and labor. So that ball's in y'all's hands now within the next five years.
Time restraints, time restraint.
And Chad, Chad has agreed to explain chiller technology if we, we would ask him to.
Chad, one was the reason we didn't do this when we did everything else last year, was it the money or?
It's still working.
Not good though.
Right, they, they had about, from what I'm told by Public Works, about $20,000 to $30,000 in maintenance costs last year on this item, and of course, we replaced the, the cooling tower, but not the chiller, I'm not a mechanical engineer, but I'll do my, my best, from what I understand, basically your cooling tower acts as, like a car radiator would, to cool the water coming in and act as storage, and then it goes into the cooling or the, to the chiller to where it compresses it and chills it to go into the air condition, and that cooled water is what runs to the air condition. Basically, we need it for air condition.
Very good, very good.
I know, I know the employees here at City Hall would be glad of that.
We will too.
We'll, we'll cancel that order for funeral home fans.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Bill.
Bill. I don't have any.
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance and a, a resolution and an ordinance I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning.
Second.
You going second, we'll just vote it before we know what it is.
Wasn't that a million dollars for your district?
Oh, the, the ordinance is the awarding bid 3231 for demolition of the Nugent Building on Chestnut Street to DH Griffin Wrecking Company Incorporated, and the amount is $110,750, which is lower than we thought that bid was going to come in.
Second.
We're thrilled to death that, of course, the ordinance is, is amending the 2013 budget and authorizing the TIF funds for, for the demolition, so I'm asking for unanimous consent to consider this ordinance and the resolution at the same time.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance and the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted for both items.
I'll ask for passage, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is a long time coming, we're just thrilled to death that it's finally arrived, that we can get this ISO down, it's been a, an ISO in our city for a long, long time, I guess second only to the old railroad bridge that we finally got painted, but we, we will sell the property, we have a buyer to offset some of this cost, so just thrilled to death that this finally takes, taking place.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt on the ordinance, those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt on the resolution.
Okay, is there any other new business? I think that's all of it, isn't it? Department reports, committee boards, are they? Marked by the mayor and the council. Mayor, you want to start?
Yeah, well, we went over some financial statement disclosures from, from a study by Milliman, it's a company who will look at your benefit package, your insurance, retirement, everything, and give you some ideas of where you are, a few years ago, we had that done, and actually, in '06, we owed close to $78 million, and our benefit package was about 78% of the budget, and a lot of cities have gone under and gone bankrupt when they get in that, that condition, but we have, the council has realized the way things are, the mayor's office has, and we've been working on some things for quite a while, and we came up with some ideas to look at the retirement benefits, or insurance benefits actually, for retirees and future retirees, and I'm, I'll do the bullets, the bottom line is that our liability for all insurance retire, retired people who's on insurance and future retirees is, was about $111 million approximately, and we made some changes that the council, we were all glad to do, because you know, if you don't have a sound financial basis in this day and time, especially the economy being like it's been the last four or five years, some cities have gone bankrupt, and you know what happens when they go bankrupt? There's no retirement, no benefits, no nothing, so we've done that to protect not only the citizens by staying financially sound, but also the, the employees, and we reduced that figure down to approximately $40 million, which is a tremendous thing, it'll help us on our financial statement if we ever want to do any projects, it makes us, our credit a lot better when we start thinking about borrowing some money if we ever do that, and it just puts the city in a better, a sound financial position, so that's, that's one of the main things we talked about upstairs today, that you'll be hearing about, thanks.
Miller?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just want to reiterate what the, what the mayor just said, this puts us in a better light as far as our financial status for your city to remain viable and, and to continue to be in existence in the future, maybe not all, may not be acceptable to everybody, but it is something that was deemed absolutely necessary by this council and this mayor, and we hope to move forward with it to see more improvements in your financial status in the future, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and again, that's, you know, just to, just to reiterate, we're, we're excited about the direction we're headed in, in terms of our, our overall financial health and overall financial position, where again, we're in, we're in a much better position to do things, we, we talked some in DC on last week about, about, and one of the, the platform items for the National League of Cities is municipal bonds, and so that's, that's the method by which the private sector invests in cities and gives us pools of money to do big projects, one of the things that they consider when determining whether or not to invest in your city is your credit rating, so again, what's happened as it relates to this, this new report is we've improved our credit rating, so we've improved our ability to actually go out and leverage monies to do big projects, so that's, that's a good thing for the city. Without, you know, belaboring the point too much, you know, do, do want to, you know, reiterate again that we, you know, in DC, we, we had a couple items that we tried to address, not the least of which was the Highway 759 project, you know, Councilman Harris, who's been a very strong advocate of that project, took the opportunity, as well as the balance of the council members who were there, to, to really petition strongly our, our congressional delegates, and, and they got the message, so stay tuned, we hope that we'll get some activity out of that, but, but again, we, we have continually followed the steps of the process as we're allowed to, and, and petitioned our elected officials to, to address that issue, they understand probably better than now, better, better now than they ever have, some of our issues as it relates to, to traffic flow and capacity issues with, with, as it relates to 431. And I, you know, some, some of these items I'll, I'll kind of leave for another time, but one thing I did want to do is, many times, we put Chad and, and the chief sometimes, and even our attorneys on the spot, but I, I want to thank them for, for being responsive, I mean, we put Chad on the spot here just a second ago to explain how our chiller systems work, and I think he did a very admirable job, so, so again, I, you know, again, I don't know that we take every opportunity to thank them publicly, but they do a great job, even when they're put on the spot like that, and, and I also want to publicly thank Lisa for really helping this council, I think, when I look at elected, groups of elected officials throughout the state, I really am proud of this council, because I think collectively, we have a very good understanding of our financial situation, much more so than a number of the other cities that I, that I've seen around the state and around the nation, so, so again, I'd put this council up against any in terms of its understanding of, of the financial matters, we have to make some tough decisions, and they're not all popular, but again, I think our financial health is, is sound, and, and we're in a position to do some, some major projects going forward if, if need be.
Robert?
Okay, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to correct, but maybe I am trying to correct, Mayor, you said we were glad, I don't know if we were glad, we, we know we had to do it, I don't know if we wanted to say we were glad to, yeah.
I'm going to say, you know, we didn't punish anybody, we took care of all the changes, and I haven't had any complaints, I'm sure there's always a few people, but, you know, like I said, we go out of business, there's nothing.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we wasn't glad to do some of the things, but it was just some of the things we just had to do in order to make this city sovereign.
Happy with the, the big drop in the amount.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I, I did, because you know, I know one or two employees that say, yeah, they were happy, they did, they were glad they did it to us, but we weren't glad we did it, we just know that that was something we had to do in order to get the house in order, and I'm surprised, I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I had no earthly idea that the changes we made would, would amount to some $70 million in savings, and I, that was, that's tremendous, and everybody on this council needs to be commended about it, and of course, Mr. Eccles is the one who always been pushing it for years and years and years, so I know he's happy, he smiled all the way through that report up there, he kept sticking his chest out like I told you, you know, but anyway, it, it's good to know that, you know, we're on the right track, and, and hopefully, somewhere down the road, you know, we're going to get it all in order. Councilman Williams talked about our trip to, to Washington, and I found it very interesting that three of the priorities that they had in Washington was, of course, one was protection of municipal bonds, and I'm talking about the National League of Cities now, I'm not talking about Alabama delegation or the Gaston delegation, but one of the other things that they talked about was comprehensive immigration reform, you know, and I want to, again, thank this city for taking the lead in that, because whether you realize it or not, it's an economical, it has an economical impact on our city to recruit and a number of other issues, and, and I know some of us, I heard some criticism about us getting into the immigration business, we're not in the immigration business, we're in the business of providing jobs and things for our community, but when you have states surrounding us, like we lost the possibility that Volkswagen plant would be here in Alabama had it not been for this immigration bill that we passed, and I do know for a fact that we probably lost one supplier because of the immigration bills, and sometimes, you have to do things to let outside people know that, yeah, you know, we live in Alabama, and yeah, Alabama did this, but at the same time, we welcome anybody to our community, particularly when they're talking about providing jobs for our people, so, again, I just thought it was great that the city of Gaston got ahead or, or on the same with the National League of Cities, and, and of course, the other thing they talked about was, you know, ending the online tax sale, I, I think there's a strong possibility that our mom and pop stores won't have to compete with the internet sales pretty soon, I, I think there's a great move on in Washington now to, to go ahead on and, and collect the tax, I won't say add the tax, because it's already there, but I think Mr. Eccles probably gave, I know Congressman Adahoe and Senator Shelby's group some food for thought when he said that, you know, since there's a major problem with trying to distribute those taxes to local jurisdictions, if the feds would go ahead and, and tax the internet sales with a federal tax, they could pay off the national debt in a couple of years, because you know, it's, it's trillions of dollars now, the internet sale is, I think when we first started out there, you know, it was just a million or two or something, but now you're talking about trillions of dollars a year that's spent on the internet, and there's no tax collected, so again, you know, if we don't get it in the local cities, if they do put the tax on and the feds get it, I'm okay, because it, again, it levels the playing field when I go online that I've got to pay seven cents or eight cents on something I buy on the internet, I can go down to the store and, and buy it for seven or eight, nine cents here in town, that levels the playing field for all of our local mom and pop shops, and that's what we really want, more than anything else, so, so hopefully, those three items that the National League of City is pushing in this legislative session, we can get some action on it, so I, I think it was a very, very good trip in that, in that sense.
Mr. Avery, I mean, on that internet sales tax, you know, NLC was very adamant about the fact, you know, that this needs to be done, and as a matter of fact, we took that same issue to Washington last year.
Right.
And, and we saw where there was some, some, some thought changes about whether we should proceed with trying to collect those undue revenues that are going to, that are being missed through internet sales, but they did, they did pretty much tell us that as, as a tax bill or as an item itself, you know, that that's going to be a tough one, and we probably won't see anything unless they can get a comprehensive tax reform bill passed, which this would probably be a part of that, but I, I just don't see the way, the way we have the, the, the issues that we're having in Washington DC now where no give and no take, no tax reform, no time soon, I just don't, you know, don't see it, they, they know it's a good idea, but to have tax reform, complete tax reform, this would be a part of it, and, you know, we need it, but I, I just say, just don't, I don't look for it to happen.
Well, at, at least it's coming from the Republican side of the aisle now, I forget the, the congressman's name, I can't remember, but he used to be a mayor in one of our cities, and what he's doing now, he's pushing it as a states' rights issue as opposed to a tax issue, so I, I have some confidence, based on talking to some of the staff people, that, you know, there's a possibility that it could fly that way, as opposed to a tax issue if they push it as a states' rights issue, because right now, they're big on states' rights, so, so hopefully, we can get that done, yeah.
Well, we heard, we heard Congressman Adahoe say that the way we presented it is, you're not raising the tax, the tax is already there, we're just not collecting it. Right. That it was... That it was hard to argue, which told me he was at least looking, maybe he would go along with it. Whether he's willing to step out and be the leader, I don't know. But I'm real proud of this council, because we did pass something that would have kept us from being in that $110 million thing back in '92, but we ignored it every year and absorbed all the increases in the insurance. Anyway, this council saw that to be physically responsible, that we had to do something, and they did something. And yes, I'm real pleased with it, Robert.
I know you are.
Bill?
I think the internet tax thing has a good possibility now. I know that a few years ago, our delegation, our senators, both of them were not in favor of it, and they have changed their attitude about it, so I think there's a good chance now that it might pass. I would like to say a big thank you to our emergency responders, our Public Works, who were getting out yesterday in that storm. We have a lot of people that are still without power, a lot of trees down, a lot of work to be done to get cleaned up. It was quite a storm. It affected just about everybody in the area, so thank you for those guys getting out and responding the way they did.
Mayor, did they have trouble with their phones, if they couldn't call people?
Yes, some of them did. They could text, but they couldn't call, and when they got in another area, they could. But I was talking to the director this morning, and they were out till about midnight last night. I knew, I called them about three times, I was headed home, and I saw three different roads that were blocked by trees.
I called them one time.
Yeah, they did a great job, and the EMA did a great job of telling everybody what was about to hit, too, but it was quick, but I mean, when it hit, it hit hard, just for a few minutes, so, but we have some good folks.
I didn't know it, I was at the water board meeting, and we just had a good time and didn't know it was happening.
Chief had made a comment to me prior to council meeting here today. Could we, could I call upon him to make that same expression publicly that he made to me earlier?
Apparently, during some of the outages, other municipalities, there were communications that went out also, and it fell to us. So our folks did a real good job in handling that and handling calls for other people that just virtue of the way the system's set up, fell on us. And we went down this morning and told them what a good job they had done, and I'm real proud of them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Through, Bill?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, I tell you, I want to thank the police department, they stood around yesterday and blocked off the trees while Public Works was trying to get there last night, and I know that was a difficult task, just, you know, trying to keep cars away from where the trees had fell. The Public Works got there and got the barricades up around the trees, and I also told them, remind everyone when it Public Works cannot cut a tree with power in it. There was a bunch of trees last night that fell in Clubview that had power lines in them, and they just can't cut those until the power company gets there first and gets the power out, then they can go ahead and start cutting the trees, Public Works can. I do say, I appreciate everything they've done last night, and I want to say that we're having our third Saturday in April, I think it's the 20th of April, we're having music on Megan, getting everything lined up. It'll be like a five or six month program we're gonna have through every third Saturday. We'll be having free food down there and live entertainment, something for District Six and the whole city to come out and be a part of. That's all I got.
Bill?
Yeah, you got me down to the end, and I was gonna thank everybody also, but really, Alabama Power Company, they stepped up, they really did. Once the police got there, they blocked it off. Public Works, our people got there. Proactive Police, I'm just real proud of the whole bunch. I'll come back to that in a few minutes, but I want to say that about two weeks ago, we sat here and said we were gonna go up there and tell them to get off their duffs and get to work. I'm waiting for somebody from Alabama to really take the lead, Robert, and Derek, and Billy, and y'all were there. I'm waiting for one of those people to get up and kind of lead. I'm getting tired of seeing all these other people like Lindsey Graham and all those kind of people standing up for what we're supposed to be doing. But anyway, that being said, I'm waiting for that day, anyway. And I was, I'm so happy about proactive police work. The chief's doing everything in the world that he can to get that instituted, but again, I was riding down Montevista Drive the other day, Sherman, and too little long, checking a pole, checking a few little holes in the road, you know, and all of a sudden, officer pulled me over, stopped me, questioned me, wanted to know who in the world I was, what I was doing in the neighborhood, and told him I lived right there. He finally caught on. But the thing about it is, people are getting more reconnaissance about the fact that we need to be watching who's in our neighborhood and why they're there, and the police are getting more proactive at it, and the people, I think, are, too, they're waking up to it. They're getting tired of being broken into, doors kicked into, and so on and so forth. So, Chief, I commend y'all and thank them personally, really, I appreciate it.
I promise you, I've got y'all's pictures downstairs.
I'm so tired of being pulled over, I wouldn't do, would you just tell them who I am? I'd appreciate it.
Maybe they know who you are.
Yeah. It's not so bad if they ever got in my garage, I've had it, you know. Don't shake me out. Oh, mercy. What are you laughing at, Billy?
I'm just saying, you shouldn't have said they can't get in the garage.
I tell you what really tore me up, they gonna take that, they gonna take that camera off that tower above my house, and from now on, y'all ain't never gonna be able to see that beautiful sunset, because the Holy Comfort House is between here and that western sunset, and I can see it every day when it goes down.
Why'd they take the camera off?
Oh, no. He said they gonna move it.
That's a different, that's a different.
Oh, really? Really?
They're not gonna move it off my tower?
They're not gonna keep your camera up on your tower. That's a different station.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate that. I just want to, I want to share those sunsets with everybody.
Boy, there's a beautiful one yesterday, wasn't it?
It was, yes, sir.
After that storm?
Yeah. I saw it because all them trees fell down.
Well, I do know that when the police shift, when the shift change was supposed to have occurred yesterday evening, that all people on that shift were told that they were not going to get off on that shift, and they were gonna stay at least, at least one hour past the time they shifted, because of the damage and the, and then the lights out and power out and just everything else that we had. So we really, the police, the police and the emergency responders really, really, really responded very well yesterday, and a lot of us, you know, didn't know the magnitude of that storm until this morning, because like when I went to bed last night.
Cable was out, you know, and I didn't know. I couldn't call anybody, I couldn't get any phone calls, because I had a cell phone, that was beside the point. But cable was out, so I couldn't get any news or anything. I didn't know until this morning, you know, that this storm was as devastating as it was in our area, so we.
Everybody's a decent man.
Well, Bob said we didn't know that the water board, but on the way back, somebody with a red roof blew right over in my, I think it was a church.
Yeah.
Whatever it was, that red stuff blew off on the road, you know.
It looked like it was, it was a roof, it looks what it looks like.
Red metal, sure was.
It's all kind of tin laying up there.
That's when I knew we had a storm.
Mr. President, before we close today, I'd like to just give you a little food for thought, and I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn as soon as I say this. If you want everybody to know who you are and what you drive, buy a van, put your name on the site, everybody will know. Move to adjourn.
Or join the circus.